I'm going to call the Election Commission to order. We are here for a public session of Canvas and adoption of the Election Canvas Report regarding the recounts for school board seats B and E races from the April 6 regular municipal election. And it looks like the time is 5:08, so we'll put on record at 5:08. What I would like to say is that... Give me one just second. Okay Barbara, I'm going to have you call, roll call please.
All right, Madam Chair. Joyce Anderson.
Here.
Are you able to hear me on the mic?
I am.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, good, thanks.
Glenna Sireland.
Here.
Cindy Hawkins.
Here.
Patricia Avney.
Here.
And Elaine Nelson asked to be excused. You have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we are going to go to item three on the agenda, which is the minutes of previous meetings, which we have none at present, as well as all business. We have no old business at this time. So our new business is the public under 5A is the public session of Canvas for school board recount seat B. Before we get into that, I would like to introduce other individuals who are here at the meeting today, so if we could go around and maybe start with Erica. Erica, if you could introduce yourself and then we'll go to the other side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Erica McConnell, Deputy Clerk for Elections.
Barbara Jones, Municipal Clerk.
Dennis, your counsel to the election question.
He and his deputy municipal attorney, also the municipal ethics officer.
All right, thank you for those introductions. And before we actually get into 5A, what I would like to do is have the... go over the rules of the recount. I don't know if that's going to be Barbara Jones, if that's going to be you or our legal counsel?
Well, how about if we do a little bit of tag team? I'll tell you the procedures and what happened, and then legal counsel can add any law or anything that I don't cover.
All right, that sounds great. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the municipal clerk's office followed the code, and you have the code in front of you, and there are extra copies of the code for the public over here regarding a recount. And so we're going to start at the very bottom of page one on that code printout where it refers to the section of the code 28.90.025, recount by order of the assembly or municipal clerk or automatic recount. And so then we're going to go to section, I believe it is, section C of this section, where it says, "The municipal clerk shall initiate a recount within seven days of the adoption of the Election Commission report if it includes a candidate proposition or measure wins or passes by less than a .05 percent margin." And it is my recollection...
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, you said .05?
Zero point five percent.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, thank you for catching that. So the results in the school board seat B race, the difference between the top two candidates was less than a .5 percent margin. So we did an automatic recount as required by code. So if you look at the next section of code, it talks about the notice. We published notice of the time and place of the recount. I believe it's required, as we said in the previous section, it was required to be done within seven days. And so the recount was held on April 26, I believe is the date that we did the recount on this one. And then if you look at the bottom of page two up for, you can see the procedure that we followed. And we'll flip over to the top of page three. We did have observers from both of the top two candidates, plus other candidates had observers. In paragraph C, it says, "In conducting the recount, the election officials shall review all ballots to determine which votes are to be counted in the recount and declare which ballot shall be recounted." And so we discussed three, and we selected three categories of ballots to be counted in the recount. And those three categories of ballots are all ballots that needed adjudication in the regular election. We outsorted overvotes, undervotes, and all of those ballots came to adjudication. The second category was write-ins. And the reason that we did that is write-ins are not counted in the regular election. As you know, there's another code provision that says you don't count the write-in votes unless the total number of write-ins exceeds the number for the winning candidate. And so in a recount, what we were looking at was to see if anyone wrote in a candidate that was on the ballot, and then if it wasn't an overvote, then that would count for that candidate. And then the third category of ballots that we counted was we had the campaigns select a random sample of ballots of the, I think there were 75,000 cards cast in the election, and we just gave them the parameters, the range of what the ballot numbers were, and they selected approximately 15 to 20 ballots. And then we reviewed the adjudication for those ballots in this race. So those were the ballots that were reviewed. And the next paragraph of section C says, "When available, the recount shall be limited to reviewing the electronic version of the ballot images, adjudicating those images, tabulating them," which means counting them, "and comparing them to the original count." And we also did that. And now we are at the next section, which is the role of the commission, and that's in 28.90.050. And we can talk about your role, or you can ask me any questions about the procedure, and then maybe Dennis can talk to you a little bit about your role.
Okay, Madam Clerk, my understanding is that a motion will be made to approve the recount presented by the municipal clerk. And then the challenged ballots for that recount will be reviewed and voted on one by one. And that's my understanding, is that correct?
Madam Chair, we contacted all of the candidates in seat B on Thursday and asked them to renew their challenges before the commission, and none of the campaigns in this race got back to us. I think the, I take that back, the winning candidate, Kelly Lessons, did get back to us and said she was not going to renew any of her challenges. But we didn't hear from any of the other candidates in that race, so there are no challenged ballots to review in this race.
Okay, so for the school board recount for seat B, there are no challenges to any ballots?
There are no renewed challenges.
Renewed challenges.
That is correct.
Okay, so the Election Commission has none to look at then at this point for seat B?
That is correct.
Okay. So... Okay, so there's none for that race, so at this point, the commission would not review any, the commission would stand with the count as presented by the clerk's office. Do you want me to mic right?
Madam Chair, I'll let Dennis Wheeler let you know what it is that you need to do next.
All right, thank you, Dennis Wheeler, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mentioned this in the work session, but I'll revisit here just briefly. There are two code sections that I think are important to you to indicate. The first is 28.85.010, and I'll pass out some copies of that if you would like to see it. And I'll draw your attention to subsection D, which says, "Any person registered as an observer present at the public session of Canvas may, by specifying the basis in writing, challenge a voter's ballot or challenge a rejection of a ballot. The Election Commission by majority vote may accept a ballot or refuse to accept the ballot." So as the municipal clerk indicated, there are no present challenges, but you may want to open the floor just to say, are there any challenges from observers that need to be made, just to confirm what she's already told you? And you can dispose of that piece of what's required. The next step is under 28.90.050, which in subsection C says, "If the Election Commission or municipal clerk reported failure to comply with provisions of law or illegal election practices, and that such failure is sufficient to change the outcome of the election, then the assembly may take action." So you need to conclusively determine whether or not there were any failures to comply or illegal election practices, and that such failure is sufficient to change the outcome of the election. If there are none, we should still state on the record. If there are some, we deal with those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Okay, so the first thing that I'm going to do is open it up for a public comment.
May I ask one clarification, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Mr. Wheeler said something about whether an observer could renew a challenge, and I wonder, Mr. Wheeler, is there a difference between an observer and a member of the public?
Go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the code specific that it has to be a person registered as an observer present at the public session of Canvas? So for purposes of the challenges, you need to hear challenges from properly registered observers. Later you may take a public comment if you choose to do so, but that's not the critical first piece of the two things you need to accomplish.
So are there any registered public observers that would like to offer any comment or, I guess, challenges?
Yes, Madam Chair, challenges only.
Challenges. Okay, we have one coming forward. Please state your name.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to let you know, Mr. Wheeler said that it would be a registered observer, and there are some registered observers here in the room right now, but as you can see, the person who has come forward, she has a yellow land yard, she is not a registered observer, she is a member of the public.
Okay, so we're going to go with registered observers.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Wheeler needs to address this.
Madam Chair, I don't know the individual in front of me, but my understanding from special basic discharges earlier is that the individual here is not a registered observer for one of the campaigns prepared for the recount.
I am.
So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that to be a registered observer for a campaign, you have to file a confidentiality agreement and registration form, and then you have to have a badge. As you can see, the observers in the audience have badges.
Can I maybe explain who I am so I know what's going on?
And the badges need to be signed by the candidate for the campaign.
Okay, and you have a list of who the registered observers are?
Judy is out of town and asked me to be her representative. I explained that when I signed in. She asked, I said, "Do I, is, am I considered an observer?" And she said, "Well, I don't know, put down that you're representative of Ms. Judy Elidge because she's gone." So I have the email from the candidate giving me her authority to step in.
So what I would like to do is refer this over to our attorney, because I'm not that familiar, as the Madam Clerk was saying, they have to sign a confidentiality agreement and so forth, and it doesn't appear that that's what you've done. So I'm going to defer over to Mr. Wheeler to make a decision on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I confer with the Deputy Municipal Attorney for that?
I didn't hear what Dennis said.
Deputy Madam's Attorney.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Wheeler, are you ready to comment?
Madam Chair, I don't know if you wanted to confirm on the list, the woman here today hasn't specified her name on the record, so let's start with that perhaps.
And if you could give me your name again, ma'am.
For the record, my name is Bernadette Wilson, and I'm here representing Ms. Judy Elidge.
All right, thank you.
And I'm more than happy to sign a confidentiality if you'd like.
Okay, Mr. Wheeler, I do not see her name on the observer log.
Madam Chair, the code provision is clear that you have to be registered as an observer. That means you fill out the proper paperwork, that paperwork is signed off by the candidate for whom you're going to observe. If that's not been done here, the meeting was noticed probably where.
We'd have to check. The meeting was noticed prior to last week. I notified, I sent an email to all of the candidates asking them to renew their challenges on Thursday, but the meeting was noticed before that, maybe the first part of next week, last week.
And Madam Chair, the candidate at issue has had other observers signed up for her campaign, I believe I've seen them, at least during the recount. So it's my opinion, it needs to follow the code, but you know, this is one of those areas where in elections, everybody's asking the municipal clerk's office and the commission and all of those of us that support that function to follow everything very strictly and very tightly, so I don't see that I'm really going to have such a...
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, and I agree with Mr. Wheeler at this point. I think that we have to be very consistent in how we handle everything, so that it's consistent from meeting to meeting, year to year, and so forth. So I'm going to agree with that. So are there any other registered observers that would like to speak at this time regarding seat B?
Is there any way I could allow Bernadette to speak for me for now, and if, you know...
And I don't know who you are, ma'am.
I'm Dawn Bailey. I was an observer, and Bernadette does have all the information and that we have, that we would like to share, and I would just ask if she could speak on my behalf.
Okay, so you are Dawn Bailey?
Yes.
Okay. I see that there are, you're not representing the same candidate?
Well, I did, I did do Judy Elidge.
I guess I have you down here for Sammy Graham.
I did do Sammy, I did the recount for Judy as well.
Did you sign a, did you sign a form for...
I have to go check.
Okay, we'll have the clerk's office go check. Hold on a moment.
So the email that was sent out does not say observer, it says a representative of the candidate can also speak.
Would you mind stepping away and wait for the chair to recognize you if you want to hear him? Thank you.
Okay, I do have in front of me Dawn, that you had registered as an observer for both, for Judy Elidge and Sammy Graham. Okay, so I do have that here. So if you could step up to the microphone, please, and tell me what's your question or concern or whatever it was, we can address that.
Hi, I'm Dawn Bailey.
Could you pick up the microphone, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Bailey. I would like to ask if... Hi, my name is Dawn Bailey. I would like to ask if I could have Bernadette Wilson speak on my behalf with some of the concerns we have from the recount.
Okay, so do you have, is what you're saying is that... Okay, so you would like her to speak about the concerns that your candidate had regarding the recount? Is that correct?
Yes, and observer, all our observers for Judy had.
Okay, and you're not willing or whatever to speak regarding those concerns?
It's not so much that I'm not willing, I really wasn't prepared. I'm not, this is out of my realm of comfort, and I did not have, like, I have not sat down and gone over all this to present to you. So I was not planning on that, and I would prefer if she could speak on my behalf.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to do two things. First of all, under 28.85.010, where it says public session of Canvas, it says, "Any person registered as an observer present at the public session of Canvas may, by specifying the basis in writing, a challenge." So I guess what I would ask, is there something in writing?
Yes, I believe there were in writing.
So there's something in writing that she can hand out to us? Is my question?
Oh, I don't believe so.
Yes. That she can hand out right now to us?
No, I have copies of it, but I mean, I can explain to you what I'm challenging, but I think this is...
Well, we'll have to, I'm going to have to listen to Dawn regarding this. So I guess what I'm saying is, according to the public session of Canvas, it says that you may specify the basis in writing, you can challenge a voter's ballot, you can challenge a rejection of a ballot, and so those are the challenges that I'm hearing that you want to present to the commission?
Okay, so the only two challenges you will even hear are ballot challenges?
Well, that's what it says on here, "And the commission may by majority vote, may accept a ballot or refuse to accept and count the ballot of a person properly challenged under this subdivision." And so I'm going to defer again to our attorney, Mr. Wheeler, for a little bit more clarification, since this is the first time that the commission has actually had a recount before them. So, Mr. Wheeler, if you could address that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll hearken back to what I said at the beginning of the comments. I think there's two things here. One, right now, as I understand it, you're asking for a very specific challenge related to specific ballots. So you need to get from an observer, those objections in writing, so that you may deal with those. Then you can turn to the second piece, which is to inquire if there's some sort of issue regarding whether there's some malfeasance or there should have, if true, was sufficient to change the outcome of the election, so that you can render your decision on that point for purposes of completing your action. So at this moment, if you're dealing with written challenges to specific ballots, and if they aren't there, then you need to move on to the next step.
Yes, and I don't believe there is. I don't.
Okay, so are there any registered observers that have any specific challenges to any ballot, either a challenge of voters' ballot, rejection, and so forth? Is there anything out there? Anybody? No? Okay. So my understanding then, Dennis, the next thing is regarding, do we need to finish this first and then go back to the other one? Or do we, if you could address that again, I know you said that, but now I'm not sure in what order.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think it'd be easiest if you make the motion related to this issue, and then we can move on to the next issue.
All right, thank you. So, since there are no challenges to any specific ballots regarding the recount of seat B, do we have a motion that states... that there is a motion to accept the recount as presented by the municipal clerk? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, the motion is moved by Pat Avney? Thank you. My mind is... And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Cindy Hawkins has seconded. Okay, is there any discussion regarding the motion by commissioners? No discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
So technically you would have public discussion, and you already did have public discussion, you opened the floor for that, so you opened it for public discussion on the ballots, and so now you voted. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so I do not need to open it again?
Not on this issue, but you do that the next...
Not on this issue, for rejected, for any ballots, okay. So as I was saying, all those in favor... Not on this issue, for rejected, for any ballots, okay. So, as I was saying, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we are moving into...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So because you have the two recounts broken down separately, let's deal with, say, on this particular race. And I know that we're sort of like, have a motion in the positives, and I don't care how phrased this motion, but you want to make a motion regarding whether or not there's a failure to comply with provisions of law or illegal election practices, and that such failure is or is not sufficient to change the outcome of the election. So if you want to, if you want to do that, then you can invite any observer to make whatever comments they want to make regarding that issue.
Okay. Okay, so you were actually reading from the 2890-050C?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. So, do we have a motion before the commission to comply with the provisions of law? That such, excuse me?
Madam Chair, help, I think I'm saying the positive.
Yes, would you please? Because that's what I'm sitting here trying to think, how I want to say this, when I'm looking at a lot of negative words here.
Yeah, well, you're implying, the motion is that the election process complied with provisions of law, and there were no illegal election practices, such that if true, there was any failure sufficient to change the outcome of the election.
All right, thank you for saying that in positive. Okay, who would like to make that motion on the commission?
So moved.
Okay, Pat Avney motioned. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Lenis Ireland seconded. Okay, is there discussion by commission members?
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt you, but you might invite observers to speak to the issue. It's like they have the opportunity to make the comments that they want to make.
Before comments by the commissioners?
Well, I think it'd be important to take some tests, and when you do well.
Okay.
First, before you then discuss them out.
All right. So are there any comments from registered observers regarding this motion? Please pick up the microphone, thank you.
Dawn Bailey, thank you. I would like to again ask if I could have Bernadette Wilson speak on my behalf on some concerns that we had during the election process, the recount of all ballots, adjudications, figure, and a few other processes that...
Okay, since she is not a registered observer, I'm going to ask the commission if they will allow her to speak on your behalf. So what is the commission's feeling on this?
I move that we allow.
Okay, Pat has moved that we allow Bernadette Wilson to speak on Dawn Bailey's behalf. Is there a second to that, to that motion? Okay, we do not have a second to that motion. So the commission is not going to allow that to occur. So is there something you would like to speak on?
Well, I suppose I would like to ask, because I had seen that...
Did you move the microphone closer to your mouth?
Yes, we can't quite hear you.
Your email here does say representative or observer that you've sent out may speak.
I would, I'm not familiar with that email. Okay, well, the code, the code requires, the code requires this, so we're gonna have to go by the code versus the email. So if you'd like to speak on that, go ahead, Dawn.
It was sent out on May 14th, and it was from Barbara.
Could you hold the microphone up a little bit more? I'm having a hard time.
Regarding all ballots, ballots to be counted for a recount, we did not even come close to that figure. There was no...
I'm not understanding what you just said. If you could say that again, please.
Well, I thought it was a recount. I thought we were going to recount all ballots. It was not a recount. I wish when we did get a pick, the few ballots we did, we would have asked for physical ballots as well as just seeing what the computer did. However, it's our first time doing this, and we have, you know, those were afterthoughts for me. Also, there was no adjudications. You could not tell me how many ballots, they said there was no report for how many ballots were adjudicated. So anytime anybody went in and adjudicated, fixed somebody's ballot, you could not run a report on that, and that does not seem or sit right with me. Those were, keys went home overnight. There were a few things that, as an observer, that I really didn't sit right with me. It did not help my faith in this process at all. Seeing people alone with ballots, watching ballots come in this last election, and then that tape being gone. Anyway, I'm sure there's so much more.
Okay, so basically, what I wrote down, what you said, is that not all ballots were counted? You said that they were computer ballots, the ones you saw on the computer, and that you did not know how many, the number of ballots that were adjudicated?
They couldn't give you a figure on that.
Okay, and then you also mentioned a keys went home overnight?
Keys went home overnight.
And explain that.
A couple of people were talking, and I just overheard that keys went home overnight sometime during the election. And we confronted, we asked Barbara about it, and she said, yes, they did.
Okay, anything else?
A recount of, say, 2,000 ballots or 1,100 or something, just doesn't even seem like a recount.
So are you recommending that all 75,000 ballots be recounted?
Well, I mean, for her race, it seemed like a recount should be, was warranted.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to clarify. I'm not being argumentative or anything. I'm just, okay.
I mean, when it said all ballots, on the, I saw some, like, email come across to the, it did say all ballots, so...
An email from whom?
From election, from Barbara, municipal clerk.
Okay, we can certainly make note of all the things that you are concerned about, and I'm sure the clerk's office will, will take a look at them, and...
But you, oh yeah, nobody seconded it.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I thought you were gonna let Bernadette talk, but nobody seconded it.
Right, they did not second. I left it up to the commission.
All right, and the public can talk, and maybe she can talk.
I'm sorry, could you hold the microphone up? I didn't...
Will the public be able to?
Yes.
And then I'd still be able to talk as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's likely appropriate to let the municipal clerk speak to the issues of your budget.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you want to speak to the issues that Dawn Bailey brought up?
I will certainly address some of them. I do have one question, and I'd like to address that to Mr. Wheeler. Do you want this, should this be a challenge in writing?
Madam Clerk, sorry, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, so there's a, there's a little bit of hole here in code, but I'm missing something. So, first part certainly requires challenges to illegal ballots being written. It's less clear what the expectation should be regarding a failure to generally comply with the law. So obviously, we would do better if we had something in writing, but I don't see a code requirement for it being written. So what that means is sometimes you're gonna deal with a verbal explanation that may not give you all the detail you'd like to see. It might have gotten, had it been written before, but I don't, I'm not aware of one in code, must I miss something?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And also, what I would like to say is, I guess I was looking at what Dawn Bailey said as more recommendations. Am I incorrect in that?
But...
Recommendations to look at, you know, taken into consideration versus actually stating that the election was invalid?
Madam Chair, that might be a question you would want to address to the observer. Remember, the call here is if there's something that occurred that was illegal or a failure to comply with the law, and a failure sufficient to change the outcome, you could determine that none of those statements are met as free conditions, so maybe we'll report saying that there's a problem. That doesn't mean that the recommendations, if that's what they are, aren't well-founded, it may be something you want to consider, but you might want to clarify if you're, if you're not sure whether they rise to the level of the code requirement or if they're recommendations. I can't speak per intent or your understanding.
Okay, Dawn Bailey, if you could come back up, please. So we're, if you heard that, we are, I looked at what you said as, as recommendations, and so we're looking at the motion that we have on the floor right now as whether there was any failure or illegal practices regarding the election. So are you stating that any of the things that you mentioned fall in that category? Or were these recommendations to look at for future recounts?
Well, I mean, you're calling it a recount. And that term was, is very loose, as far as the recount.
Well, what I need from you is a yes or a no. Are you looking at any of the items that you stated as falling, that you feel fell in the area of either a failure or illegal practice regarding the recount?
Well, I do believe it was a failure to have a recount. Yes.
I know, but...
It was definitely a failure. A few things were a failure in the...
So what, I'm sorry, I need to know what, what things you are referring to as a failure? I need, I need for you to be specific.
Well, I believe it said all ballots will be counted. I believe it said it would, all ballots would be counted. And there wasn't even close to 10% for...
Okay, so you're saying then that that was a failure? Am I on the right, being here, Mr. Wheeler?
Madam Chair, you are. So, you know, she's alleging that there's been a failure complying with the original law. She hasn't made the code site, but the municipal clerk said it earlier to how the recount is conducted, so you can discuss that with the municipal clerk. Second piece, however, is that the failure is sufficient to change the outcome. So you might inquire as to whether there's any evidence or whether or not this failure, this alleged failure, is sufficient to change the outcome.
Okay, so if you heard what Mr. Wheeler said, there's really two things we're looking at here. Was there something illegal that was done? And then was there a failure such as to, to make sure that we have the correct vote total? Am I correct in that? And that's basically what it is. Okay, so what, what of those two are you referring to?
Well, regarding the keys, I have...
I have, I can't hear you.
Regarding the keys, is, no idea. How can I answer that when we looked at 1,100 ballots and about 76,000?
Okay, so the two points that you're bringing up are that not all the ballots were counted, and that some keys went home overnight, is what I'm hearing.
I can also tell you when they went to, to run the numbers at the end of the recount, there was some struggles and moving around. They turned off the screen and did some stuff.
When you say struggles, what do you mean? I'm not, I'm not following you.
Like, well, it took for a while, she turned off the TV, so we couldn't see it. And I even asked Barbara the next day, when we did Sammy's, to please leave it on, but everything went smooth that day. But they had to go back, they were checking books, coming back through over here. It took about a good 10 minutes before, you know, they printed something off and it came out. It just seemed, I was here one time observing, and the numbers on the computer were wrong and didn't match, that computer didn't match that computer, and they were a little flustered and not sure what was, you know, it just, there were just things that, as an observer, that, you know, that I had known nothing about, but just did not seem like, and that was one of those moments, like the 10 minutes that it took. It didn't, it wasn't like with Sammy's where it was just, can you please leave the TV on and let me see what you're doing? And it went fine. And it was like two minutes, a minute, and we knew the result. So...
Okay, what I would like to do is, if you're done explaining, I don't want to cut you off, if I could have Madam Clerk talk a little bit about some of these.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As to the first allegation that all ballots would be counted for the recount, all ballots were counted for the recount. If you look at the code section that we're talking about, we're talking, it's on page three of four, it's 28.90.040. It is paragraph C. What it says is, that when available, the recount shall be limited to reviewing the electronic version of the ballot images, adjudicating those images, and tabulating them, and comparing them to the original count. Tabulating is the same as counting, although we isolated certain ballots for specific review of the images. All 65,000, well, let me see, let me correct that. All, sorry, glasses issue here. All 65,932 votes that were cast in that race were re-tabulated. So, and that is consistent with the code. The second statement was that there was a preference to review the physical, the physical ballots, not just the images. And in the same section of code that I read, it says, "The recount shall be limited to reviewing the electronic version of the ballot images," which is what we did. Even so, during the recount, if there was a challenge made to any of the ballots, we did go and get the physical ballot image. We didn't put them in sleeves, and we allowed people to look at them. They, you know, of course, people can't touch them, and the commission, that's why we put them in sleeves. So we, the code allows us to look at the images, and if someone had requested a physical ballot that was challenged, we would have looked at that. ballot that was challenged, we would have looked at that and did. The third point that I have is there was no adjudication report for how many ballots were adjudicated. And something that we indicated that there was no report. You know, I do have a report that we printed after the recount. It's called an activity report. There's 400 pages in the activity report, and it's a, there's nothing in the report as confidential, and I can make that report available so people can see how many ballots were adjudicated in that recount. I think the other allegations, there was some comment about, you know, the computer and turning things off on the TV. You know, if that was the case, I apologize for that. You know, I think there was, the numbers in the recount are consistent, they're not exact. You've already reviewed in your work session why there are some differences between the regular election and the recount. But I don't think that the allegation regarding the computer has anything to do with a violation of law or the code. And I think the other allegation concerned this election, and another allegation concerned the recount or the regular election. And I will affirmatively state on the record, I did not speak to Don Bailey and say that keys had gone home. So, that is my response for now.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, at this point, Mr. Wheeler, can I ask the commission for comment?
Madam Chair...
Or do we need to go back?
No, just, I think the last piece is make sure if there's anybody else that wants to speak regarding this topic, they should do so now, so we can move on to the next session.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this subject?
Is this members of the public?
Is this for members of the public, Mr. Wheeler?
Madam Chair, so, again, I think this is where the code could use a little help because if you only allow public comment after your motions on the agenda, then the public can't really raise allegations of illegal practices or violation of code. So, I think, yes, it would be appropriate to allow members or members of the public to speak to whether or not they think there is a violation significant enough to change the outcome.
All right, so we have members of the public. Please step forward, state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Bernadette Wilson. So, the first thing, there are several items that need to be pointed out. The first thing is that the email that was sent to the candidates informing them about who could speak today, sent by the municipal clerk, Ms. Barbara Jones, indeed says the candidate or their representative. Now, if that is not accurate, if that is not in accordance with code, then that falls on the shoulders of one person whose duty it is to inform those candidates and not to tell them that a representative can be there if indeed that is not accurate. That is a huge mistake when a candidate believes that someone can show up, speak on their behalf because of an email that the municipal clerk, whose main job is to oversee this process, misspoke. Somebody did not get into writing correctly what should have happened. That is a great mistake that needs to be addressed moving into the future. The second thing is that on May 11, this commission was indeed sent an objection to the vote count. It was sent to elections@ancrageak.gov. It is dated May 11, signed by the attorney for Ms. Judy Elidge outlining numerous issues. So, you should all indeed have something in writing, an objection. I know that that was never withdrawn, that objection was never withdrawn, so let's also get that addressed. Because as I sit here and I watch the conversation going on even in front of me, it raises a whole lot of questions. As we get into that letter, I would also like to point out how incredibly unprofessional it is to have someone step up to the mic who does not even say their name, yet the municipal clerk says, "Well, I recognize them." Then, some of you, as you mentioned, didn't even know my name, yet you had a municipal clerk object before my name was even stated. Again, incredibly unprofessional and not called for for a body that is overseeing the election process. Now, let's talk about these ballots and some issues that were raised. During the recount process, roughly 1,100 votes, roughly, and I know that candidates were not even told exactly how many were recounted, roughly 1,100 were recounted, far below the number that should have been. Yet, and I'm quoting, "In an email that the clerk sent on April 22, 2021, the municipality of Anchorage Elections Team has determined that all ballots," and I emphasize "all ballots," "in the school board race detailed in the subject of this email will be recounted pursuant to AMD 28.90.040." All ballots. That is what is laid out. Yet, the municipal clerk decided that they would recount roughly 1,100, roughly 587 or so write-ins. How they were adjudicated exactly, we do not know. That is a problem with the recount process. On election night, when again roughly 30,000 ballots were turned in, the municipality, the clerk, they ended up counting again roughly 11,000. And I'm using rough numbers because I don't have that exact number in front of me. So, roughly 20,000 ballots. Now, what was told and what was, what the exact quote, a quote was given to the Anchorage Daily News by municipal clerk Barbara Jones. She made the comment to the Anchorage Daily News that that roughly 20,000 ballots was not counted because they were in question somehow, whether it was markings or lines drawn through them. Now, I know that when candidates asked to see those ballots, the candidate will tell you themselves, and it's been pretty widely shared, that the comment that Ms. Barbara Jones made was, "Well, we don't have time." No, they deserve an answer. If they want to see all 20,000 of those ballots, they have the right to see them while we're sitting here talking about what's in code and breaking it apart. The comment of, "We don't have time," is not adequate. And if it's a he said, she said, regardless, let's assume that it is, I would make the case to you that it's not, there's several people that actually say they heard that, but let's assume that it's a he said, she said. Why on earth were those 20,000 ballots, if they were indeed marked up or needed to be adjudicated for some reason, not shown to the candidate? Why was a recount only 1,100 votes that the municipal clerk attempted to, you know, I understand the candidate could pick roughly 15 to 20, that doesn't change the fact that what was sent out said that all ballots, and all ballots most definitely shouldn't have been recounted, especially considering the fact that an email was sent to the other school board race recognizing that there would be a recount despite the fact that it did not fall within the margin of error due to election integrity issues. Now, if you were admitting in another school board race that you have election integrity issues, why on earth would you not fulfill your promise to count all ballots as what was stated in your email that was sent out? There are several irregularities going on, and we can sit here all night and talk about them. The reality is, is this commission is well aware, there are a lot of eyes right now on this building, there are a lot of eyes on you individually, there are a lot of eyes on you as a group. You are here not to be a rubber stamp for the municipal clerk. You are not here to be her political cover for mistakes that have been made. It is your job, this commission exists, to very thoroughly take the information and investigate and make sure that that individual is indeed doing their job, that if mistakes have been made, that the very foundation of our democracy is protected. There is a huge burden on you, and I'm asking you to fulfill that obligation when you know right now more than ever it is needed. There are, this building is being watched all four corners. I know that you are all aware that there are videos that have been passed out and things going on even outside the building that look very suspicious. Not that that is necessarily related to this particular school board race, but I mention that to help you understand, and I'm sure that you do, what is at stake here. And I will leave you with that again, that you are not to be, this body does not exist, to be a rubber stamp to the clerk, as I have shown you even in emails that were sent out. If you're going to say representative, then you better allow a representative. If there was a mistake in that and you want to go back to the code, I mean, for crying out loud, do you understand that that means that the municipal clerk, time and time again for elections to come, could send out emails that have inadequate information and then go back and say, "Well, that's not what the code is"? Well, where is the accountability for the information that your clerk is sending out? That's why you are here, to ensure accountability from the clerk, to ensure accountability for what happens inside this building. And like I said, we could go on and on. I mean, there's pages. The letter that was sent to you on May 11 has multiple issues that are lined out, multiple irregularities, which even the clerk recognized. If that is the case, then every single last ballot should have been recounted. On election night, all 20,000 other ballots that candidate have the right to see. This shouldn't come down to a time issue. If it is a time issue, then maybe it's time to find someone that can better handle the time commitment that this process takes. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like, Madam Clerk, I would like you to respond to a May 11 email that was sent. Is that...
I have no idea.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that because I know we didn't receive anything. Okay.
If I, I don't have, there was, whoops. There was no challenge filed in this race by anyone in an email, in particular, an attorney. And again, I think the code is clear that an observer, a registered observer, can file a challenge. And we have had, we've had challenges filed. It is true that Judy Elidge filed one challenge, and I have responded to that challenge. I think the other two challenges were filed in the mayoral race, and there are some other challenges for the runoff. But I don't have any other, no other challenges have been filed. And I can get you a copy of the challenge that Ms. Elidge filed, but her, I don't, but anyway, I can get a copy of that for you. But I do not have another, any other challenges. We just have, we have three challenges that were filed, and the others relate to the runoff. Some of those even relate to the runoff. Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll start to the issue of representative. Because the member of the public was able to speak before you know it, I think that that's been cured. Your Assembly Council, or not Assembly, your Election Council advised that it is more cautious to take this route, to have the public testify because there was a difference between the two sections, the one where you had to be a registered observer and then this with, for the election difficulties. So, I think that's something that has been cleared up for this issue.
Okay, so we've had the public testify.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. And we have a question? Go ahead, I'll take that.
Has this election been outsourced at all?
I will defer to Madam Clerk regarding that, but I'm not quite sure what you mean by outsourced.
Is it outsourced to any, anyone at all? I had asked the other day about something, and she had told me to, if I have any questions, to talk to Dennis Wheeler, he's the one in charge here, and that just made me kind of like take a step back because I thought Barbara was.
Well, I know what you mean by outsourced. Certainly, the city didn't do the printing of the ballots, and that was outsourced. I know that for a fact. So, I'm asking you what you mean by outsourced. You seem to have a specific...
I know Dennis Wheeler is wearing two halves because he mentioned it on the day of Judy's recount, and I would just like to know if this election's been outsourced at all besides ballot running.
I will defer to the Madam Clerk to give the answer there.
I don't know what outsourced means.
I'm trying to figure that out myself. So, I, like I said, I know ballot printing is outsourced, so I'd like Barbara to...
Madam Chair, the municipal code is clear that the municipal clerk is responsible for the election.
Unless you can be more specific, I'm going to move on because I'm not sure what you mean.
And Barbara, did the keys go home overnight at any point during that?
Did you know, I am going to decline to respond to that question. It has nothing to do with the recount, and I have affirmatively stated that we have a key log, we keep track of the keys in a key log, and that is the proper answer. We have primary, secondary, and tertiary security. This has nothing to do with the recount.
I agree. I have fairly agreement with you, besides when we were sat over right over there, me, you and Sammy, you did talk to us about it.
I did, and I've said exactly what I just said right now, Dawn. I declined to answer the question, and I provided you information that we have a key log and we can review the key logs, but we have, and that we have primary, secondary, and tertiary, but this has nothing to do with the recount.
Thank you. All right, so I am going to go back to the motion that we have on the floor. Mr. Wheeler, is there something you'd like to comment on?
Madam Chair, again, let's finish with inviting anybody from the audience to speak to the issues and then move on to your question.
Okay, is there any other additional comment from the audience? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to move back to the motion. So, we have a motion on the floor that Dennis Wheeler phrased so positively, so I'm going to leave it at that. Do the commissioners remember what the motion was?
Yeah.
Okay. Dennis, if you could do that again, please. I know, it's so much easier. Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, any chance, anybody wrote down the motion? I don't know if I can rephrase exactly, so I don't want to...
Okay, we've got it.
I have the first half, this is Eric Papano, but Mr. Wheeler may need, may need to help fill in at the end. The motion is that the election process complied with the provisions of law, and there were no illegal election processes. That, if true, would change the outcome of the election. Is that about right?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Maybe change process practices, just be very fully informal, but yes.
Okay. All right. So, that is the motion, actually, that is the, that is the statement that we need a motion on, so... So is there a commissioner that would like to make a motion about it?
I so love...
Okay, Cindy Hawkins moves. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Glenna Ireland, second. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are there any other questions that you have for me regarding the allegations that were made? Or perhaps questions for Mr. Wheeler?
Um, commissioners, are there any questions? Go ahead, Cindy, I have a couple, so I'll let the commissioners go first.
So this is a clarification as much as anything for myself, having been involved with elections for a number of years, and pretty familiar with the process. I'm just wondering if there's a point of confusion on public observation in the recount, knowing that a recount really does review all ballots, and that the ones you were specifically looking at, as you had listed, are the ones that needed adjudication. Additionally, you're looking at all write-ins, and then the campaigns were individually allowed to look at an additional 10 or 15. But in no way are, were they limited to just those ballots. All ballots were counted based upon the pictures or the, that are taken from the machines. So essentially, they are not the physical ballot, but they are the ballot.
Right. Thank you. Cindy, through the chair, we followed the provision of the code in Section C, where the review of ballots was limited to the ones that we talked about. It's the electronic images, those that were adjudicated, and then the write-ins. But you are also correct that we tabulated or counted all of the ballots from the original election.
And you only focused specifically on those races. You weren't looking at any of the other races or any propositions. You were able to indicate, I only wanna see ballots for those particular seats that were being recounted.
That is correct.
So I'm just wondering, I wondered if maybe that clarification or that misunderstanding could have happened with the public observation, and knowing exactly what was taking place, and if that explanation could be better explained to them at the time, or when it's all be done, if that is...
I, I don't think so, Cindy, because at the beginning of the recount, we had a meeting, and it was a meeting with all of the candidates and their observers, and it included all of our staff. Mr. Wheeler and De Ennis were there, and I introduced everybody and their roles. And then we explained the process. There, we, we changed the process, because I had sent out the email, and we thought that we were gonna quarantine any challenged ballots, and then we found out if we did that, we couldn't tabulate, so we couldn't count. So instead, we told people that they would just write their challenge down, and they did, and you've seen the, the challenge forms. And so, no, I do not think there were any misunderstandings about the process. I think there is just a disagreement.
Okay.
Uh, the second question I have is that this supposed, or the 20,000 ballots on election night, could you, do you have any, could you enlighten or explain what, any misunderstanding might have been there, or what that, what question Madam Clerk is thinking?
Well, I, number one, I don't think it has anything to do with the recount. So, um, do you want me to respond to that?
Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, actually, I don't, I don't think it's germane either, but I don't think it hurts, as I understand the allegation. There is a difference between how many envelopes are received over there, which is how many have been left in the scanners over here. But I'm not familiar with the 20,000 number, or what that's addressing, so you may...
And that's kind of what I was, again, familiar with the process, that there could be a difference, and, and valid envelopes could have arrived but not been looked at or even processed yet, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. So, through the chair, Cindy, what, what I, what I believe, I understand the references to, is on election night, we produced results, and the results were about 10,000 votes. However, we had scanned about 40,000 ballots. So it's totally regarding the scanning adjudication and tabulation. It doesn't have anything to do with that, although it's true that we have had misunderstandings about that.
Okay.
So, I did issue a press release on election night that said we were surprised about the number, and I just don't even remember what I said. But we, we were surprised about the number, and, um, we, um, in hindsight, we, we think it had to do with some of the adjudication, which I think some of you saw on some of these ballots, we had, you know, like some ballots, like this ballot, for example, um, well, unfortunately, this one is an overvote, so none of these counted. But if this had been an effective correction, it's 35 adjudications per ballot, and you can see there were a number of these. And unfortunately, we didn't anticipate that in advance of the election. And so what had happened with those 40,000 ballots, a number of them had batches that needed adjudication, and, um, we didn't recognize that. And so when we submitted the completed batches to be published, it was a lot less than what we had anticipated. And, um, we corrected it the next day, and we got caught up and adjudicated all of those batches, and the numbers have just continued to climb every day, until, except today, we didn't issue results, because now we're on the, the downside. There's only about 200 ballots to scan.
That's all I have.
Madam Chair, just for a point of clarification on that for the rest here. Madam Clerk, as I understand it, if you have a single ballot that needs some final adjudication, it holds the entire batch.
That is correct.
So one ballot can hold up the recording of 100, 150 ballots, because a single ballot's held until it's finally adjudicated.
That is correct.
So spread that across multiple batches, and you can see why there could be a difference between what, which batches have nothing to adjudicate, so they go to the toe, and all the other batches that are still waiting for that final adjudication, and what they need is a single ballot and one batch. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what I understand it also. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? None? Okay, I do have one, um, comment question. I know you had mentioned an activity report?
Yes.
Of the ones that were adjudicated?
Yes.
Um, I think it would be helpful to make that available, and so that would be my suggestion, um, to make it available to the candidates as well as to the commission?
I will do so.
All right. Okay, that was my one comment. Okay. If there are no other comments, uh, there is one.
I have a question from the, yeah, a second. Thank you. The May 11th, um, email that is referenced, I don't know what that email is about. I did not see a May 11th email, did you?
No. Okay, I know Barbara commented on that, and she had said, or Madam Clerk had commented on that, and said that she did not have that email. Is that correct, or is it not, that it was not a challenge?
I said, I do not have a challenge.
Okay. Then, then correct me. Okay. A challenge. Correct. All right. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners?
Madam Chair, I, I also would like to make sure. I, I do not believe that the, the email was addressed to the commission. But if you want me to go check, I will.
You should go check.
Yeah. You would like her to check? Okay.
Okay.
I have a slew of paperwork here for you. I have an email from Stacy Stone, and it says that she has been retained by Judy Norton-Allage with regard to the election. It is dated April 22nd. I responded on April 22nd, and that email is right here. I have another email from Stacy Stone dated May 12th. I responded on May 15th. Oh, but excuse me. This is regarding a few quick questions on behalf of the Bronson for Mayor campaign. I have another email from Stacy Stone dated Thursday, May 13th. It is also regarding the 2021 mayoral runoff campaign. That was May 13th. I responded on Saturday, May 15th. I have another letter, a two-page letter dated May 7th, and I responded with a two-page letter on May 10th. That one is concerning the 2021 mayoral runoff campaign and the Bronson campaign. This is all that I have, and you can take a look at that.
I'll just leave this right here.
Through the, through the chair, I checked my inbox and looked for emails in my inbox, and I don't have another email in my inbox. Madam Chair.
Yes?
While, while the commission is, is reviewing the correspondence, some of it is related to this recount and, and some of it is not. But even so, I am wondering, you know, Bernadette Wilson has indicated there is an email, which I, I haven't seen, and she has it here. May I make copies of that for the commission to review?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Stacy said that this was in the attachment from the May 12th email. I don't know if that helps you at all. Stacy said that the email she sent was from the May 12th. I don't know if that helps you, but...
We're trying to... Do you have the...
Yes, let me go talk to him.
The letter?
That letter...
Oh, this one.
It has.
I think that was not used.
Yep.
Okay, Pat is ready. Cindy, are you ready? Glennis? Okay. Glennis, you were the one that asked about the May 11th email, which we now have before us. So I'm going to defer to Madam Clerk about the email and where it was. I mean, if you could explain the May 11th email that's addressed to the Commission.
Madam Clerk Chair, I continue to do not know where this email was. Bernadette Wilson provided it for us, and with your permission, I got it from her and made copies for you. So I checked my email. I provided you before that everything that I had. As you can see, Ms. Stone does have my email address, and this May 11th via email does not include my email address on it. Now, Ms. Bernadette Wilson said that it was attached to a May 12th email to me. So could we ask her if that's accurate?
Ms. Wilson, if you could come forward, please.
I don't think that was on the record before, so that might be helpful.
Okay. So if you could identify yourself again for the record.
For the record, my name is Bernadette Wilson. And let me find, I think that I have the screen captured. Give me just a second. I'll pull it back up.
Okay.
Sorry, give me one second. I gotta find this again.
Madam Chair, just to clarify for the record.
Yes.
The May 11th document is a letter from counsel who says they're representing Judy Eldridge. And it is dated 11, and indicates it was sent via email to elections@ankridgeak.gov. So a presumption that it was an attachment perhaps to that email that was sent. Just to clarify what it is.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like this was sent May 12, 2021 at 3:19 PM. It's the screen capture that I have. And it says that it was sent to elections@ankridgeak.gov. It looks like it was also sent to, and I'm sorry, this is a little blurry, so I may not have the exact email correct. Looks like NASSA Assembly Members at ankridgeak.gov as well. And that's, like I said, I see where Assembly Members have responded, and so that was the first thing that I have that I went back and picked up.
Did you say it was sent to electionsak.gov? Cool.
Oh, excuse me, elections@ankridgeak.gov. Sorry, the screen capture is fuzzy on my phone.
Okay, thank you. If I see it on the letter, I just wanted to make sure that's what it was.
Yes. That's what I see here. And I don't know if this helps or not, but I think that Ms. Judy Eldridge might be on the phone.
Who?
Judy Eldridge? The candidate that we're talking about.
Is she listening?
I believe so.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, so Madam Chair, again, I did not get that email. It wasn't addressed to me. And Erica is checking the elections email to see if it was in there. If it was in there, it should have been forwarded to someone, but I don't know if she's going to check to see if she can find it. But I wasn't populated on the email, as you can see. The Assembly Members were.
And that's what that means on the bottom here? Where it says WWMAS?
Yes, that would be the Assembly Members.
Okay. All right, do we want to wait a minute for Erica to find that, or should we?
I think we can go on and address some of the concerns that are raised in the letter, if you have some questions, or if you'd like me or Dennis to start.
Well, why don't I start with the first one, which has to do the next meeting of the Commission? And explain that the Commission meets when there is an election and when there is business before the Commission regarding the election, whether it's looking at rejected ballots, or in this instance, it has to do with the recount. And so we do, we are required by code to meet in January of every year. And so we meet in January of every year and determine who is going to be the Chair and Co-Chair of the Commission, and look at any other business that needs to be addressed at that time. We have met at other times of the year, when we first went over to vote by mail, where the Commission was required to look at certain documents to make changes, or look at recommendations that were made by the Municipal Clerk's Office, or sometimes into the code, and look at them from our point of view, and that's also when we meet. So we do not, just for everyone who's here, have regular meetings, except for that one in January. And it just says we shall meet in January. So I wanted to make that clear when I was talking about Commission meetings. They're not scheduled at other times of the year, other than around the election. So Madam Clerk, if you have something else to say about that?
Yes, I passed out to you and made available to the public the public notice for this recount. And you can see on the public notice, which is required to be published on the public notice page of the municipal website, that the meeting was noticed. And I believe the date is on April 21st, it was noticed. In addition, Madam Chair, I provided you both the notice for the recount for this race, as well as for the recount for School Board CE race. And if you see in that notice, there's a citation to the code. And I will read that citation to the code. It says, "Per 28.90.025B on the Municipal Clerk's Initiative, MOA Elections is conducting a recount of the votes from School Board CE from the April 6, 2021 regular municipal election. Because in the clerk's judgment, conducting a recount may increase, quote, 'voter confidence in the election process.'" I see there are several references to election integrity, and that is not the case. We refer to the code, and the code citation is voter confidence.
Okay, I think some of the other issues in paragraph two were addressed. And not paragraph two, I'm sorry, paragraph three. I will ask for public comment in just a moment. Okay, so paragraph three, we addressed that about the all ballots. There's really nothing in paragraph four, paragraph five. We addressed the first issue. The second issue, I think, was already addressed by Madam Clerk. The third issue, I believe, was also addressed. Unless you want to add a few comments regarding that, Madam Clerk.
I would. It says, thank you, Madam Chair. Says, "Third, observers were not able to view the electronic ballot on the review screen, given COVID protocols, and there were limited attempts to resolve the same." And I would tell you, this is not true. And I understood there was an issue during the regular election. And so on Friday, April 23rd, I printed you an email that I sent to our Dominion vendor, asking him to make it a high priority, so that I can put a large screen there. And then you can see that series of emails, and at the end of it, at 2:43 PM, I said, "Got it, they're on it." That screen was there on Friday, and Monday, for the recount, the large screen was there. So it was, the allegation that people couldn't view it is, you know, it was a mirror image, it was very large. We put, there were, the two primary candidates were allowed to sit right in front of those screens, and the secondary candidate was allowed to sit second. So we had, there were a lot of people there, but they were right in front of the screen. So that's to address that issue.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. And for the fourth issue on here, I'm going to refer to Deanna.
Regarding the attorney advising the clerk?
Yes.
We might also have Mr. Willer address that.
Dean, could you use a microphone? I was just going to say that.
And I am the municipal office officer. So what I asked Mr. Willer to brief was, does his company monitor the ballots? His company, of course, is RDI, which is instrumental in creating this equipment. He consults with the city on that. But Mr. Willer, does your company monitor the ballots?
Madam Chair, answer the question? No. Resource Data provides project management support, so we've been involved with the process of developing this center and provide troubleshooting technical support when called upon. But we don't monitor the ballots. We have no contract to monitor the ballots. We troubleshoot the store, maybe. We provide assistance with the data transfer from the state of Alaska to the Northern Central Region side of the election. We interface with some vendors as needed, but in terms of monitoring the ballots, we don't do anything. Closest we come is I have worked with Guardian, which provides the security system. And I don't work for the system for, on behalf of Guardian. And the security system protocols affect that. I don't have any need or reason to monitor the ballots, whatever that might mean to state system or council of the state.
And I would also add that although Mr. Willer is an attorney, almost all legal advice that's given to the clerk's office on assembly issues is also reviewed by the Department of Law. Like I said, here, I don't have the same subject matter expertise in the workings of this equipment, or the rewrite of this code. But the municipal, the Department of Law does review almost all legal advice with a copy of, I've seen all of this, filed by 134. But Mr. Wheeler, does your company monitor the ballots?
Madam Chair, answer the question? No. Resource data provides project management support. So we've been involved with the process of developing this center and provide troubleshooting technical support when called upon. But we don't monitor the ballots. We have no contract to monitor the ballots. We troubleshoot the store. Maybe we provide assistance with the data transfer from the state of Alaska to the voter system side of the election. We interface with some vendors as needed, but in terms of monitoring ballots, we don't do anything. Closest we come is I have worked with Guardian, which provides a security system. And I don't work the system for, on behalf of Guardian. And the security system protocols affect that. I don't have any, neither reason to monitor ballots. Whatever that might mean to Stacy Stone, the Council of the Senate.
And I would also add that although Mr. Wheeler is an attorney, almost all legal advice that's given to the clerk's office on assembly issues is also reviewed by the Department of Law and National Defense. I don't have the same subject matter expertise in the workings of this equipment, or the rewrite of this code. But the Municipal, the Department of Law does review almost all the legal advice. We copied, I've seen all of the scores by 134, we've involved in some of it. So basically, that Municipal and its office is also heavily involved.
Thank you. Okay, before I go to public comment, is there any other comment from the Commissioners? I'm wondering at this time, at this time, before I go with public comment, if it would be helpful for those who are here to know just a little bit of background about the Commissioners. So I think that would be helpful. So Cindy, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I started with the elections either at the state level or the county level, probably about eight years ago. And started as a precinct worker, and then proceeded to work in different capacities to include any of the curing of ballots, adjudication, reviewing, and taking care of some technical issues. I helped manage one of the special elections in August, a couple of years ago that we had. So I have a very strong familiarity with the process that we have with the county.
I worked elections for a number of years.
Pat, give me.
Pat Adney. I worked elections for a number of years. And I've been on the Commission for several years now. And...
I think that's pleasing to you.
Pardon?
You've worked elections for some time.
Oh, yes. I worked elections for many years.
My name is Lenis Ireland. I've been working elections since 1985. When I became a citizen, I was really interested in the election process. And I became an election worker. And then I also was a stakeholder in the development of this poll by mail system. And to see it come to fruition and to work so well is just a real joy to me. And I came onto the Commission about three or four years ago. And I enjoy working with Joyce and the rest of our Commissioners to see that this process is going as dictated in our novels. Thank you.
And I'm Joyce Anderson. I'm Chair of the Commission. My background includes being Director of Elections and Voter Registration for the City of Minneapolis for 16 years before I moved here. So I have a real background in elections. Minneapolis purchased optical scan voting equipment before I left. So I went through that and very familiar with it. And that's why I volunteered to be on the Commission, because I felt I could really add some background to what goes on with elections. So I thought that might be important for the Commissioners, to just kind of give some background to maybe some people who haven't been here before. Madam Clerk?
I do have one thing I think that I need to add to the record. I asked Erica to check to see if, check the elections@anchorageak.gov email box. And this letter was received on Wednesday, 5:12. It's in the box. And it was an error on our call center staff. And I apologize to the Commission for that. And I apologize to the public for that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so I'm going to open this up for public comment. I know we had an individual who wanted to speak. So if you want to step forward and pick up the microphone and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Catherine Pfeifer. And I am here representing School Board Member-elect Pat Higgins. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, and members of the City Council, or, excuse me, the Anchorage Municipal Attorneys. Not sure exactly what your title is in instances like this. After the election, I did receive, in regards to the attorney's letter, the fifth paragraph. There you go. Wasn't sure if it was on or not. On the fifth paragraph on the first page, fourth sentence in, it's about midway down, I did have a conversation with the clerk. I asked specifically because my client was ahead of the curve on being an automatic recount. The letter states that, in quotes, "election integrity" is what was mentioned by the attorney. That term, that turn of a phrase, was never uttered during that discussion when I was asking the clerk, "Why are we going into a recount?" We certainly didn't have any issues with there being a recount. I did question who was going to pay for it. I learned that the county was going to have to pay for it, regardless of what the municipal code might say. My understanding is that the loser was the one who had to pay for any incremental, any kind of cost. Be that as it may, I would like to point out as a point of clarification that nowhere during School Board CE, which is my client, did Barbara Clark ever say anything about election integrity. Her words were voter confidence. She wanted to make sure that the voters in the municipality had confidence in this election. Does anybody have any questions? I just wanted to make that clarification, so there is no doubt.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and have the Commission, there is additional public comment? Okay. Do we allow one person to speak, or at one, I mean, just one time? Or, I know that's what they do with the Assembly. How do we operate?
So, Madam Chair, just to make it transparent, what the Assembly does and what you're doing here is the Assembly is, nor are they as a legislative body. So it's taking public testimony regarding legislation and pressing limits on timing for that. You're engaged in an adjudication process, which is different, right? You're basically taking evidence, then you make the decision. And while you don't have any specific procedures on the back and forth, you could sort of analogize this to say a court hearing, an administrative hearing, where decides to have a little bit of opportunity to go back and forth and present evidence. So what's occurred is, Ms. Wilson has talked about a series of emails. Ms. Jones has presented her understanding regarding those emails and produced other documentation. So I think it's appropriate to allow Ms. Wilson to respond to this last round. And then you can decide whether you've heard enough to then move forward.
Okay. Go ahead, please identify yourself for the record again, please.
For the record, my name is Bernadette Wilson. So a couple of things that I want to point out. The first thing is that Ms. Jones, you know, supplied emails regarding the ability to view when they were recounting. In the letter which the attorney sent, the time that she is referring to observers not being able to view the ballots is referring to election night and those ballots previous, prior to the recount. That is why, that is one of the issues, why this idea that all ballots should have been recounted is an issue which we are concerned with. Because they could not see them until after that equipment was set up. And so that's why Ms. Stacy Stone, somewhere, brought that up in her letter, is because they could not see them on election night, as Ms. Jones recognized. So I just want to lay that out, because her response really muddled the timeline and what that is referencing. The other thing that I would like to point out is that this email about so that voters can have more confidence, really needs to be taken to heart, because they do not have confidence. That is correct. And as we have talked about tonight, for numerous reasons, they do not have confidence. So I'm glad that at least there is a recognition that the voters do not have confidence. And as I stated earlier, that is the duty of this Commission, is to help provide transparency and confidence to those voters who definitely do not feel that they have confidence in Ms. Jones and in this process, due to several issues that have been laid out. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
Can I respond?
Madam Clerk, if you'd like to respond, go ahead.
I think the letter is clear. It says, "In addition to the foregoing, several other issues were highlighted during the course of the recount." This letter is dated May 11th. The recount was on April 26th. Third, observers were not able to view the electronic image, electronic ballot on the review screen, given COVID protocols, and there were limited attempts to resolve the same. It is clear this is referring to the recount, not the regular election.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Erica, could you read the motion again?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion is that the election process complied with the provisions of law, and there were no illegal election practices that, if true, would change the outcome of the election.
Okay, so the motion has been read. And is there any discussion from Commission Members again, since we've had public comment and other comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are now moving on to 5B, which is a public session of canvas for the School Board recount for CE.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to take a five-minute break?
I think we should.
Okay.
We'll take a five-minute break. Yeah, I think our five minutes is up. Next. Okay, we are under new business 5B, which is a public session of canvas for School Board recount CE. So... The first thing that I'm going to do, which I have to think about here for a second. No. Sorry. So... I believe we need a motion to approve the recount as presented by the Municipal Clerk, and then we will go into the challenged ballots. Is that correct, Dennis?
Madam Chair, I guess I might.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the recount as presented by the Municipal Clerk.
Go move.
Okay. Pat Adney, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And now we will go into the challenged ballots. So we do have some challenged ballots. We have six of them. So we're going to have Barbara start with the first one. And they will be all numbered with their number. And then we will take a look at them. And then we will open it up for the registered observers to respond. And then we will move to either accept or reject the ballots. So let's move forward. Barbara with the first one.
I think Mr. Wheeler may have a procedural question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to check again. I believe what we did on the earlier recount was we confirmed that, to that situation, there were no continuing challenges on individual ballots. And I guess the question, is it a different posture at this recount?
Yes. Yes, we are.
Okay. So we are moving forward correctly?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. So our first challenged ballot. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to talk about that.
All right.
Then give the ballot number, please.
Yes. The ballot number is 19168. And on this ballot, there is what might be called a hesitation mark or an overvote. And as we explained in the work session, what the Clerk's Office does is the system is set for 25%. And if the 25% is marked, it is considered an overvote. That is consistent with the information that I gave to you. It would be, we got a lot of papers here right now. That's...
I believe it was on page 23 of 34.
Right. So that would be number four. If the voter marks more names, then there are persons to be elected to the office. The votes for the candidates to that office shall not be counted. Marks for both a write-in and a challenged name, whoop, and a candidate. Got a little issue with the glasses there. Named on the ballot shall not be counted unless challenged.
Okay, so I'm going to pass the ballot around to the Commissioners and staff. And then I am going to ask if there's any registered observer who would like to also take a look at the ballot. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I would like to make sure that we agree on the protocol, although an observer can't handle the ballot. And we've got these in sleeves, so that none of us make any smudges or marks on the ballot. I think I have to hold this in front of him.
Correct.
So that we see and comment about it.
Okay. If you would go ahead and do that, please. And if you would state on the record your name with the microphone, please.
Certainly. First of all, before I even address this item, does that work better?
Yes.
I'm Randy Reeb, with the Sammy Graham Campaign. And even before I want to address this first ballot, I want to cover three or four points, which I thought about covering earlier. I figured it'd be better to cover them once in this context, rather than spend time in the work session. I want to thank the Clerk for authorizing the recount of CE, because I do believe, and I don't care which words you use, the election process in this country is somewhat under challenge. Having this recount to demonstrate the integrity of the counting process is, was important to me. Because it reduces the number of people who can run around with partial information. There's nothing better than detailed, proper information to cleanse our processes. And with that, I'll leave this first item.
See, this is the, so this was considered an overvote.
Okay.
And if that is a 25% coverage, if I had it, I would eat it. I think, maybe you will find in all of these challenges, we have discarded human common sense. I will leave it at that on this document.
Are there any other observers who would like to speak? Hearing none. Based on Barbara's comment about 2880050, the number four, is there a motion? And a motion needs to be in the positives. So is there a motion to...
It's a move to reject, it's a rejection of the...
Right, that's a negative. Okay, is there a motion to reject a ballot number 1-91-68, based on the municipal code? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have something to say? Or Erica, Deputy?
She has a better way to say it.
Okay, Erica McCallum, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would recommend that motion in the positive to accept the adjudication as an overvote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to accept the adjudication as an overvote? Lenis Ireland, motions and, Pat Abney, seconds. Okay, is there any discussion by commission members? None. Pardon?
Mostly a comment on the...
Okay, we have a comment from Commissioner. Go ahead.
Which kind of helps clarify it from...
State your name.
Oh, this is Cindy Hawkins. What helps clarify and make my decision is the fact that in the adjudication of this particular ballot, and that 25 percent mark, it's uniformly applied to all ballots, and therefore I accept the ballot as recommended myself.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? None? Mr. Wheeler, we can go ahead and take a vote, or do we need a public comment part? No, we did the observer.
Madam Chair, the challenges in this section are based on registered observers, so you can put your vote in.
Okay. So, we have a motion before us to accept the adjudication. Is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you would like to read the second one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our second one is ballot number 2-82-21. And on this one, the ballot was counted as an overvote, and that was because the code says in paragraph 5, it directs voters how to correct an error, and it says, "Candidates or answers to propositions, questions marked with a strike through across the oval and name or answer shall be indicated, treated as indicating the voter's intent not to vote for the candidate or answer so stricken." And on this ballot, if you recall, the voter merely struck through the, all of the ovals for, and, but then didn't strike through the name. And the other part of this is, we spoke about paragraph C that says, "The rules set out in this section are mandatory, and there shall be no exceptions to them." And the final issue for this one was that, on the last page of the handout, a slash or a check mark, as you can see, is a ballot vote, and so we counted this as an overvote.
And Madam Clerk, if we could point out also, the instructions on how to do that are listed at the top of the ballot, and I think it's important to put that on the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I find this ballot...
Okay, identify yourself in it, please.
Randy Reegerd for Sammy Graham Campaign. I find this vote extremely disturbing to democracy. If this code was written in French, it would be more correct, and I might be able to live with it, because then the polyannic code is extremely directed. Our whole concept of justice in our country is based on British common law, common sense, looking at a result. Therefore, I believe you should accept this ballot, because the voter clearly did something. He violated our extremely overly prescriptive process, clearly did something, and the code requires the ballot to be rejected. We will revisit this comment repeatedly for the rest of the day.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Yes, I found it. I, I agree with Mr. Rooks' point, I do. Maybe the voters could have struck through the open oval and the name, all of the ones that they didn't want to be counted, and maybe that would have saved the ballot, if you will, from the way this would be made. I think you're going to see more of these, perhaps, where certain voters want to make sure no one touches any of their open ovals. But my legal sense is that, again, there was instructions on how you could do that successfully, and so that's the struggle for you to deal with this crash or what the voter may have intended and what the voter plans.
Any other comments, Mr. Reegerd?
Randy Reegerd for Sammy Graham. I will defer until the next item.
Okay, I have a question, or legal counsel. I know that the code does state that, is there any leeway that the commission has in making a determination, or if they do, and I know we talked about this earlier, that we need to be consistent and across the board as to what's in code and what the Election Commission does, so I wanted to just throw that out for comment or discussion from legal.
Madam Chair, may I have her assistance?
Okay.
I have a question. Thank you.
That actually was, Madam Chair, my initial thought as well.
Okay, identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. De, Deputy Minister Attorney. So, that was my initial question as well, because there was a provision here that talked about some rules, and it said unless challenged. But that was for the write-in provisions, and it's not applicable to the overcount section. In fact, in the overcount section, we have, what is it, C, but I think that says, 2880-507? C, C, okay. It says, "The rules set out in the section are mandatory, and that there shall be no exceptions to them." So, it doesn't have the unless challenged portion to it.
Is there any reason, is there any reason, and I know this is something that could be discussed at a later point, but I, is there any reason why number four says unless challenged, and the other ones don't?
For that, I probably have to defer. Barbara, you were part of the rewriting. Mr. Wheeler, you were as well.
Madam Clerk, do you have any answer for that? Oh, Mr. Wheeler?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, if you play tennis, sir. So, obviously, in the, in the original count and revocation of ballots, they don't look closely at the write-ins, so they don't really know what's in the write-in blank. Right? It could be the ovals coming in, the write-in line is completely empty, or it's for a person who's not candidate, or double dot, or all kinds of stuff. So, when you do the recount, now you're looking at the write-ins, and you can have an argument about what is in that line. Was that a legitimate candidate, or if it's only the first name of the candidate, or if it's only the last name of the candidate? Is that enough to go on? You might remember the Murkowski write-in race, and all kinds of questions about spelling and all the other things. So, that's where you can have a challenge, and you can make a decision about, well, they really meant the same person? So, instead of creating an overvote, you might conclude it's just one vote for the one candidate, and that's what that language addresses.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, based on the explanation by both attorneys, it appears that the Election Commission has no choice but to adjudicate this ballot as, it's not counted based on number five. It'd be 2880-505. And I do believe that these ballots will have that reason stated as to why they were adjudicated as such, so that it's on the record down the road, when we're mentioning the statute and the number here. Is that correct? So, that's what the motion would state, based on that? Is that correct, Erica?
Madam Chair, so the previous motion was to accept the adjudication as an overvote, so if you make the same motion, that would be on the record as the adjudication of this ballot.
Okay.
Did I misunderstand your question?
Yes, my question is, is should the statute be mentioned when the motion is being made? So, for the future reference down the road, we are referencing why it was adjudicated as such.
I see. I think that would be excellent.
Okay. So, let's finish this one, and we'll go back and do an amendment to the first motion. Okay, so, this motion would be that, that this ballot, which is 2-82-21, is adjudicated as rejected because of 2880-505. Is there a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, you're gonna, you're gonna accept the adjudication.
I'm sorry, accept the adjudication.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to accept the adjudication.
Thank you. Been a long night, obviously.
It is.
Okay. Pat Abney made the motion. Who seconded?
I'm the second.
Okay. Lenis Ireland, second. Is there any further discussion by the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, do we have a motion to amend the first motion for ballot number 1-91-68 to include the reference?
Move.
Pat Abney, so move. So, that reference is going to be 2880-504.
B4.
A B4, I'm sorry. The last one was B5, thank you. Okay, so there is a motion to amend the, the original motion for item number one. Is, was there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Cindy Hawkins, second. Is there any further discussion, or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're now on the third one, third ballot.
All right. The third ballot is 2-82-22, and that one looks almost identical to the last ballot that we just discussed. It was adjudicated as an overvote, because the voter didn't properly strike through the name as well as the oval. So, it also relates to paragraph 5, that the voter did not mark through both the oval and the name, indicating the voter's intent not to vote for the candidate or answer so stricken.
Okay, do we have any observers who would like to comment?
I'm waiting on the donkey.
Okay. So, please state your name again for the record.
This is Randy Reegerd with the Graham Campaign. This is obviously a hundred percent duplicate of the last problem. It again violates all of your common sense, but you're bound by the French Code adopted by our Assembly to reject this ballot.
Thank you for your comments. And another observer, please feel free, take the mic.
Madam Chair, I don't... No worries. Madam Chair, I don't wish to comment necessarily on this particular ballot or the ones previous. However, the subsequent ballots that do come forward, I would like to take a look at as well, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Oh, please state your name again.
Catherine Piper. I'm the campaign manager for Pat Higgins, candidate for seat E, and now candidate-elect.
All right, thank you. Why don't you just have a chair right there? Okay. So, we have before us ballot 2-82-22. Is there a motion to approve the adjudication per 2880-50B5?
So, move.
Okay, Pat Abney moves. Is there a second? Lenis Ireland, second. Is there any discussion by committee members? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Madam, I always want to say Madam Secretary.
You can call me Madam Secretary.
Oh, yeah, Madam Clerk.
All right. This is ballot 2-136-52, and on this ballot, the voter circled the candidate and wrote in the candidate. The odd thing about this ballot is the voter did this on all of the voter's vote. We considered this an overvote. Madam Chair, I, I would like to suggest this is one of the, is a difficult, it's an unusual ballot, and it's very unusual that a voter would color in the oval for every candidate, and then color in the write-in and write the same candidate's name. That's very unusual, specifically when our instructions say vote for one. And you can see that it says vote for one on every single one of those races, and that was one of the reasons that, that staff and I believe this was, that the voter intended to overvote. That could be one of the interpretations here. We don't determine voter intent, but we believe that it was an overvote, consistent with the rules. Yeah.
And we have an observer who wishes to testify?
Yes.
Okay. So, the clerk will bring over the ballot.
Looks like an overvote to me, that's all.
Did you want to speak on the record at all? Please state your name again.
Catherine Piper, I am the campaign manager for Pat Higgins. And looking at this, it seems to be very apparent that they are overvotes.
Thank you. And we have another observer who wants to speak?
Yes, how can?
Please state your name again, I'm sorry.
Randy Reeger, for Sammy Graham's campaign. How can one possibly conclude that this is an overvote when the individual repeatedly checked a box and wrote in the name, making sure that they were voting for a single individual, not one alike, one race, but all of them? I did not look at how they mangled the ballot measuring. But looking at the can, at the races, they voted for one person. And to say that that's an overvote, to me, is a complete lack of judgment. And we need to give our folks running the election the ability to determine voter intent. If they voted for one person, they have voted for one person. We need to fix the code, thank you.
Madam Clerk, could I see the ballot again, please?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Pat.
I'm carrying a little bit. I'm having a little difficulty when the intent is clear, but the all of her is not.
And that was Pat Abney speaking, okay, go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I'll draw your attention to page twenty-three of the code section. This is also under B four, this is the last sentence of B four, lines sixteen, seventeen. So marks for both a write-in and a candidate name on the ballot shall not be counted unless challenged. So, it's been properly challenged and now is the verdict. This is your opportunities to, to look at this as an open way. And this is about the write-in and the candidate name that allows us to change the adjudication. Put another way, unlike, sorry, put another way, unlike some of the other code versions, you have more form of stretching there.
Thank you for stating that again, Mr. Wheeler. That's why I wanted to see where it does say vote for not more than one. I don't understand the person's, I'm gonna speak for a second and then, if anyone else wants to, if that's okay. I don't understand the person's logic for voting for that person and then writing the name in as well, other than the fact that maybe they might get two votes out of it, I don't know. Yeah, I throw that out to be funny. That's why I wanted to see if it said vote for not more than one, because honestly, I couldn't remember, because I thought maybe that some of them might have been for more than one. Okay, I don't know if anybody else wants to look at that, but, okay, go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Madam Chair, another possible theory is similar to a couple of the earlier ballots, where the voter is thinking they're helping that, so they're sure all the ovals are marked such that there's, there's no, no likelihood of their voting contributed differently. Again, not exactly what we're just getting, another way of looking at it used, but that's one of the other theories.
Okay, so, we've had comments from both observers, okay? And you had another comment? Okay, go, go ahead again. State your name again.
Catherine Piper for Pat Higgins. When I looked at it, what kind of, the first thought that came through my mind was, I know nothing about this person, and of course, the clerk is correct that your work is not to try and figure out intent. However, when I looked at it, it was like, I wonder what these people were thinking, that they're going to get two votes for their candidates, and perhaps that was their intent. Not, I want to make sure that the Elections Division gets it right, but rather, I want to see if there's a way to get them two votes, instead of just one vote. That was what came through my head when I first looked at it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Randy Reeger, for the Graham Campaign. I find conjecture of the candidate trying to create two votes in extremely dried-out red hair. Person was trying to vote for one person, voted twice, both ways possible on the ballot.
Okay, commissioners, discussion. Cindy.
So Cindy, um, this one is a, this one's a tough one for me, because even though they have marked for the candidate, and also written in that same name, it is the same person. So that's one of the issues, so it's not like they voted for two different people. And yet, the rules person in me also indicates that the rule wasn't followed. But that's kind of why we're here, so I think I'm leaning to a little bit more toward recognizing maybe what I would see as the intent, which was to vote for one person, and that's what I'm looking at. And I don't think the really question is to who you want to vote for. And I would lean toward accepting it.
I would think I do say. The person knew who he wanted to vote for and just reiterated it. But it could also be, and generally, it is an overvote. So it's up to us to decide if we want to do it.
Okay, that was Glenna speaking. That's okay. Okay, well, I've already made my comment, and I've heard everyone else's comments. So, does anyone care to make a motion?
I'm moving to accept the ballot.
Pat Abney, I'm moving to accept the ballot. As being adjudicated or as?
As being adjudicated.
As, as being adjudicated.
So, let me make a suggestion. You can either accept the adjudication, and it would be an overvote and a no-count, or you can reject the adjudication.
I'm moving to reject the adjudication.
And it would be a count for Sammy Graham.
Okay, so the motion was to reject the adjudication, and that the vote would be for Sammy?
Graham.
Graham.
And Madam Chair, you could say that it's pursuant to paragraph B four.
Okay.
Because it's unless challenged, and that's what you're saying.
Pursuant to twenty-eight, eighty, oh, five, oh, B four, okay. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Cindy, Cindy seconds that, okay. Is there any further discussion now that we have a motion on the floor? No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, okay, motion carries. Okay, we are now down to ballot five. Madam Clerk.
This is ballot two, two-two-zero, six-seven. And on this ballot, the voter colored in the ovals for Alicia Hildy and Sammy Graham, and then crossed out the oval for Alicia Hildy, but didn't strike through the name. So from our perspective, it was an ineffective correction and an overvote. Interestingly, this voter also wrote an arrow with a yes pointing to Sammy Graham. However, the code says to us that, um, has a little section here. Oh, and I've got it highlighted. Okay, so, it's on page twenty-four of thirty-four, it's B seven, says all other overvotes shall not be counted as a vote for any candidate or for an answer to a proposition question, regardless of markings or handwriting notes.
Okay, I believe we have some observers who wanted to justify on this ballot.
Randy Reeger, for the Graham Campaign. I find this is the most severe example of code infringement on common sense. The voter tries to enhance their correction, and they're discouraged and disallowed by the code from having a right to vote. This process must be fixed.
Any additional comments? Go ahead, state your name.
Catherine Piper for Pat Higgins. What the gentleman to my left may say may have merit. Be that as it may, the municipal code currently is clear. Rules are rules, and they should be taken seriously. That said, Team Higgins has obeyed the rules, and I think they should be consistent throughout all of the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you both for your comments. Any comments from commissioners, based on the observer's comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjudicate the ballot based on twenty-eight, eighty, oh, five, oh, B seven, to reject it based on that code?
Accept the adjudication.
Accept the adjudication, I'm sorry, accept the adjudication.
I'm moving to accept the adjudication of the ballot.
Thank you. That was Cindy Hawkins. And the second was, Glenna Ireland seconded. Okay, is there any discussion by committee members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are now on ballot number six.
Okay, this is the last challenged ballot, it's three, two-ninety, forty-eight. And in this ballot, we have a voter who used checkmarks. Checked a number of votes and colored the ovals in. And then, in the school board seat, E race, the voter colored in one oval, but then checked a different one and slashed through it. And because a slash is a valid vote on page four of your materials, and because the voter didn't slash through the oval, it was considered an ineffective correction and an overvote. And that would be pursuant to paragraph four.
Number four.
Yeah.
Catherine Piper for Pat Higgins. Again, it's about following the rules. And on the ballot, it does say consistently, vote no more than one.
Thank you.
Randy Reeger, for the Graham Campaign. I know this is tedious, but I wanted to put commissions through this process. I could have withdrawn these charges, because they quite honestly do not matter in the result of how this election comes out. But this affects every election in this city forever if we don't fix this mess. I tend to believe that the clerk is competent, capable, and it doesn't even matter when she and her staff have observers over their shoulder for both campaigns, making sure the process is done right. We do not need a municipal code that prevents you from doing what you know in your heart is absolutely proper. You know what the intent of the voter is, and you're not allowed to do anything about it. Now, something very terrifying happened to me on the second day of the weekend. A guy I have been in opposition to on ballot adjudication issues for about twenty years, me and I sat down and agreed that this was wrong. David Dinsmore and I would like to work with you and the Assembly to fix this mess, because we look at this as a way of people being disenfranchised. Does that make anybody happy? Preventing people from having a right to vote, it's pretty obvious what they wanted to do, but somebody in a closet, no disrespect to this, you know, in the closet, writing this code, trying to make it perfect, assuming that there was no intelligent gray matter in the process. I have seen that the adjudication process works. We need to make it more powerful. Campaigns that don't show up should not be allowed to have a right to complain later. You have a right to be here for adjudication, and if you lost, you go home. I did not expect these recounts to have any impact on the outcome, but I found them to be very positive learning experiences for what was fixable in the code to make our process better, make your lives better, and definitely make her life better. That may be with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, both of you. Okay, um, okay, so this last ballot would fall under the category...
It would also be under B four.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna say. So it was marked for both a right end and a candidate?
No.
No, it was not, that's why I'm...
It would, um, my, I think my mic has died, but I will still give it a try here.
Because I, I'm not, I don't...
It's number four. If a voter marks more names than there are persons to be elected to the office, the votes for candidates to that office shall not be counted.
Okay.
So because it would be a vote for, um, Latesley and Graham, it's more candidates than are to be elected for the office.
Okay, I was looking more at the right end part, and then I didn't, I didn't catch that, okay.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Ms. Whitley.
Would be appropriate to mention that there's a tension there with five, or at least, you would say it is an ineffective correction.
Yes, thank you very much, Dennis. That is correct. Similar, in addition to marking more names than the voter didn't effectively correct it, they slashed through Bill Latesley, but didn't slash through the oval, so...
I mentioned seven, then all other overvotes come off.
Right. So in other words, there's lots of reasons.
Right.
Or issues here.
Okay, so, does someone want to make a motion? Um, is it going to be...
So you could choose...
I mean, it's gonna be A, B, or C, I'm sorry. I'm ready to go home.
You can say all of them. You can say B, four, five, and seven.
Okay, so it could be four, five, and seven. Okay.
Jinx.
All right. Um, so, Pat, so moves. Okay, so we're going to move that we are adjudicating the ballot. Accepting the ballot, um, based on adjudication relating to twenty-eight, eighty, oh, five, oh, B four, five, and seven. Okay, is there a motion to that effect? Oh, we already had a motion with Pat, Emily. Is there a second?
One second.
Glanis Ireland seconds. Is there any discussion by Commissioners? Did you want to say anything? Cindy just breathing heavy over here. Okay, you did.
Again, the only latitude we have is if it were just number four, we'd be able to maybe infer something here, but if it actually falls over into five and seven, we're kind of restricted. What I see on that particular ballot is they failed to cross through the mark or the oval. And yet, it was, they were consistent in the way they voted throughout that ballot. So that's where I am kind of in my decision process, I guess.
Any additional comments from Commissioners? None? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we are now under member comments, item number six. We are moving right along. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Whitley.
Almost. So recall, there's two different things you're doing.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, we are also going to, um, open this up under five B for public comment regarding, um, whether there have been, uh, if anyone here has any comments, and I lost my paper, there we go, thank you, yes, um, regarding whether there were any, um, failures or illegal practices that occurred during the election that someone feels they need to bring up before the Commission. Okay, hearing none? Okay, we are going to have a motion, and I'm going to have Erica read that motion again.
The motion is that the election process complied with the provisions of law, and there were no illegal election practices that, if true, would change the outcome of the election.
Okay, Pat, Emily moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Cindy Hawkins. Any discussion by Commission members? Okay, any public comment?
Randy Reeger for the Graham Campaign. I appreciate the effort that the Commission has gone to today, as well as the staff and the legal advisers. It's important that we enhance the credibility of our election process. We've just gone through a runoff election, where we had ninety-three thousand people settled. People can't, they need to reward them with a process that they're proud of. I spend a lot of time talking to people who are positive it's evil, and the most fun thing I find is that they have no idea what's wrong. Need to, as I mentioned in the canvas a couple weeks back, we need to do a better job of putting out information as to how this process works. We've had a tremendous number of observers here, and I think one great thing that's gonna come out of this, more people will know what's going on, and that will help our process. But we need to do as many things from a positive reinforcement standpoint from the Commission, like fix the problems in the code. We are disenfranchising people overtly. There will be simple solutions by trusting the staff and the observers, get us to the right answers. I look forward to working with everybody to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Catherine Piper for Pat Higgins, and to add to the gentleman on my left's comments in terms of enhanced credibility, um, perhaps enhanced credibility or confidence, and certainly in regards to his comment on positive reinforcement, although, uh, I feel privileged and actually honored to live in a country and in a municipality, my, you know, my town where I live, where there was an utterly transparent process, um, and I couldn't be more pleased with the transparency. There's always room for improvement. I certainly don't think it needs to be overhauled, and I think that, uh, this process, you know, shows that, um, there is a high degree of integrity in our election process. But with that thought, we're human, and there's always room for improvement, and I certainly think that engaging, uh, the voters in the municipality on the ways to go forward, right now, we have a set of rules. Those rules, those codes are meant to be honored, and if they need to be shifted, then so be it. And, uh, as you move forward, I certainly hope to see additional, I certainly expect, um, a transparent process on public comment, on how to make our election process, um, take it up a notch, if that is at all possible. Thank you all for your time, um, and for your efforts, and again, I was deeply honored to be able to participate in this process. You have handled yourselves professionally, and I couldn't be prouder of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, member comments. Did I say that already? Okay. Okay, um, I think I went with the public comment before member comments. So are there any member comments? I think we all need to absorb what has occurred today.
Could I just make a, a public comment?
Yes, go ahead.
This is, again, as a public member, I have two things written down in my notes watching this state, voter education and a less challenged. Those seem to be the two areas we work, we need to work on. Uh, I brought twenty-year-olds to vote at City Hall and had them into the recount. They said, "And don't draw anything on your ballot." And with twenty-year-olds, we're very lucky, we didn't have minds everywhere. How can a twenty-year-old not write something off the ballot? So again, voter education and a less challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. What I wanted to say before there are any other member comments is that I think there's, there's been a lot to absorb today, so I'm thinking, um, Madam Clerk, it might be best to have a meeting down the road where after we've had a chance to absorb some of these things, to be able to have a meeting to discuss some of the issues that have come up, that I've made some notes on, and I'm sure everybody else has. So if anyone else wants to comment, fine, but I'm, I'm kind of at a point where I need to absorb this before I make any comments. Everyone okay with that on the Commission? Anybody want to say anything? I'm not cutting you off. Glanis, okay?
Glanis Ireland, I would just like to thank the clerks and the deputy clerk for the mammoth task that they have done, and the way they have gone through all of these ballots and this exercise. It's been exemplary and very well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Glanis. And I echo that as well, and I'm sure all the Commissioners do. We all have worked the process, as I've said before, and we all know what's involved behind the scenes, so we all realize the mammoth effort that is involved in putting on an election, which doesn't happen to end on Election Day, which we are all aware of. So with that in mind, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, did you want to say something, Catherine?
I think one of the hardest problems I have is my feelings, common sense, and the rules.
Thank you, Pat. Cindy, you don't want to say something?
I don't want to say anything.
You don't want to say anything? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'll go ahead, Erica.
Did you vote on the last motion? The election process complied with the provisions of...
Yes, we did.
You did? Okay, I apologize, I missed it.
Yes, we did. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, and it is what time? I can't quite read that over there. Eight...
Eight-thirty-nine.
Oh, my gosh, eight-thirty-nine.
Early.
The last time, I think it was eleven. Okay, eight-thirty-nine, we are adjourned.